Sunday, August 17th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Thank you, everybody, for being with us tonight. We have Pastor Lee Dalbridge from the Smyrna Christian Church at 910 Concord Road. I'd like to invite him up to give the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody, please rise.
Father in heaven, we thank you for the privilege we have to be here. We thank you for life. We thank you for Jesus. We thank you for the fellowship we can have one with another. We ask tonight, Father, that you be with these city leaders, that you give them wisdom, that they may know the right thing to do, and then that you give them courage, that they be strong and do that right thing. It's in the name of Jesus that we pray. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, for being with us this evening. Next item on the agenda is the mayoral report. I'm pleased that we have some special guests with us this evening, and I want to recognize the Smyrna Elite Track Club athletes. And why don't you all come on up around the podium and the coaches? We have Grace Smith, Leela Rochelle Harriet, Matthew Fernando, Doyle Morrison Jr., and Roger Baker Jr., who goes by RJ, and we're recognizing them for their outstanding performance at the 84th AAU Junior Olympic Games. I'm going to tell you a little bit about what these folks have been doing earlier this month. This is amazing, y'all.[156.62][156.62](APPLAUSE). So these students, the first week of August in Satellite, Florida, went down to the AAU Junior Olympic Games, and they were, they're five Smyrna athletes from the Smyrna Elite Track Club that were competing. It's based out of Smyrna, in Campbell High School, and it's been in operation for a little over six years under head coaches A.J. Davis and Todd Schusterman, and the coaches here this evening as well? Okay? So during their last five seasons, the program has produced multiple All-Americans, Junior Olympic qualifiers, state champions and state qualifiers, but this is the first season the club has brought back national Junior Olympic titles to the city of Smyrna. Last week, five athletes, all Smyrna residents, represented the city well, with three of the athletes bringing back four national Junior Olympic titles, and all five becoming So here's what they accomplished. Grace Smith, Grace, raise your hand. Grace is entering the ninth grade. She's an AAU Junior Olympic champion for girls 14-years-old long jump, also the Junior Olympic champion for girls 14-years-old 100-meter dash. She was a silver medalist in the girls 14-years-old 200-meter hurdles and the bronze medalist in the girls 14-years-old 100-meter hurdles.[253.01][253.01](APPLAUSE). Leela Rochelle, can you raise your hand? Leela Rochelle is entering the third grade, and she is the national champion in the girls eight-and-under 400-meter dash. She's the silver medalist in the girls eight-and-under 200-meter dash and the bronze medalist in the girls eight-and-under 100-meter dash.[277.14][277.14](APPLAUSE). Matthew Fernando, entering the 11th grade, he is the AAU Junior Olympic champion in the men's 17- to 18-years-old 1500-meter run.[293.89][293.89](APPLAUSE). Doyle Morrison Jr., entering the fifth grade, he placed fourth nationally in the 10-years-old 400-meter dash, and he's an All-American.[306.83][306.83](APPLAUSE). And RJ Baker Jr. is entering the fourth grade, and he placed fifth nationally in the nine-years-old 1500-meter run, and he's also an All-American.[320.64][320.64](APPLAUSE). Coaches, I'd invite you all to speak about these kids, and if any of them want to say anything, be glad to have it.
First of all, thank you for having us. We really appreciate it. Smyrna is a great city. We run over at Campbell High School. We want to give them a little shout-out because they allow us to work out over there, and they've been really good to us. I really just want to recognize the athletes. They've done tremendous. We can only coach them. They have to do the hard work. It's not easy running track. I mean, what you do is you have to be very disciplined. You just run, run, and run, and you have to eat well, you have to go to bed on time. These kids sacrifice a lot to be able to do this, and I'm just really proud of them and like for them to say a few words.
I would like to thank our coaches, Coach AJ and Coach Todd, and I would like to thank my mom for coaching me throughout the quarantine and just keeping me in shape.[394.05][394.05](APPLAUSE).
I'd like to thank my parents and Coach Todd and Coach AJ for training pretty much the whole summer. It was really fun, so thank you.
I thank my parents and my coaches this year. Thank you.
Do it. It's on. Thank you, Mom.
I thank... I thank my mom.
There you go. Good job.
Yeah, and as Coach Todd mentioned, these athletes sacrificed a lot. Once, you know, everything got locked down and everyone was quarantining, we were actually in the middle of starting up our spring season. We ran one track meet, and the next week, pretty much, everything got shut down as we were preparing for our second meet of the season. So the athletes up here, many of them just continued to work out. Their parents were very involved in getting them over to, you know, a track to train and/or taking them over to a park, and they stayed in shape and they stayed ready for us, you know, once things opened back up. And, you know, when we opened back up, we even, you know, kept our groups small and, you know, practice are very divided, not what we're used to as a coaching staff. And a lot of these athletes, you know, were used to training in larger groups, but they had more one-on-one coaching, and I'm sure they did not like that because we definitely were on them a lot. But they worked hard, and they made this season special under the circumstances, and I'm very proud of them. And I want to thank you guys for, you know, inviting us up here today. You know, we really, you know, enjoy running for the city of Smyrna. We're a part of the Parks and Rec program with the city, and, you know, that was the season that got canceled. So we're hoping that we can kind of get that season going again next year, and we host meets at Campbell High School. So if any of you guys are around and hosting a meet, you guys are welcome to come out, you know, once things open back up. Thank you.
That's awesome. Thanks, y'all, so much for being here. It's so cool to have Smyrna kids recognized like this. And would you all mind if I come down and get a picture with y'all? Councilman Pickens sent me a text that he wants to challenge a few of them to a run, and I'll pay to see it, so maybe we can get that race going at some kind of charity event going forward. The only other thing I have on the mayoral report, y'all may have seen that on Saturday, the governor issued a new executive order which allows local governments to enact mask mandates, and so tomorrow, we will have an executive order here in the city of Smyrna regarding face coverings. It'll be within the legal parameters of the governor's executive order. And in here in Smyrna, we've prohibited people from entering indoor city facilities without face coverings for several weeks now, so this will add enforcement mechanisms to these requirements. The order will provide enforcement support for Smyrna businesses who mandate face coverings on their property and will be consistent with our efforts over the past several months to keep Smyrna citizens safe. So more to come on that tomorrow. That concludes my mayoral report. Item four is agenda changes. We do have one agenda change this evening, that's item 5D, and at that time, when we get to that, I think Councilman Gould will make the motion to table that. That was at the request of the applicant. Item five is land issues, zonings, annexations. 5A, 2019-440, this is zoning request, public hearing zoning request, Z19-019, rezoning from NRC to OI to MU for the development of 170-unit independent senior living facility and 114 townhomes at a density of 11.85 units per acre, 23.95 acres, landlot 775, 810, and 811, 2320 Campbell Road, Inline Communities LLC. This item has been tabled to September 21st at the request of the applicant. Also, item B is being tabled. This is item 2020-237, zoning request, Z20-008, rezoning from GC to RM12 to MU to, for the development of 105 multifamily units, 15,100 square feet of retail at a density of 35.8 units per acre, 2.93 acres, landlot 594 and 631, 2930 through 2968, Johnquill Drive, 1650 Spring Road, and 1639 Corn Road, the Woodbury Group LLC. Okay, all right. Then may I have a motion on item 5A to table?
Motion to table.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Lindley. Do I have a second? Okay. Seconded by Councilman Pickens. All those in favor of tabling item 5A, please vote. It's approved 7-0. I've already read 5B. May I have a motion to table that? So moved by Austin Wagner, seconded by Councilman Lindley. All those in favor of tabling 5B, please vote. It's approved 7-0. 5C is item 2020-84, public hearing, plat approval with variances, V20-015, 0.462 acres, landlot 627 through 1730 and 1740 Seneca Court. Ladonna Lewis. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Since Joey is up, I'm just going to go ahead and let him give the background, and he'll share with you the P and Z vote on this particular item.
All right. Good evening. Joey Staub's, planner two, is a plat approval with variances at 1730 and 1740 Seneca Court. This was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board last Monday. It was approved 6-0. You can see this is the subject property. It's actually four lots. Two of them have houses. As you'll see later, two of the houses are over the existing lot lines. It's owned R15. Proposal is three single-family homes where two are there now. It'll stay R15. So this is the subject property. These are where the current lot lines exist now. So the two houses on the outer parcels, the inner lot lines encroach over those existing houses. They're proposing to build a new house in the middle. There will be three new houses. They're going to consolidate two of the lots, the two middle lots into one lot. So this is the current outline, outlay of the lots. Those two middle lots will consolidate, and then the two lot lines will move so that those existing houses will be on their own lots. So this is the proposed lot configuration with the middle house being the new proposed lot. There is an existing drainage easement that goes down the middle. They're proposing to move that over to the side. It'd be a 10-foot easement. These are the proposed setbacks for front setback of 10 feet, side setback of 10 feet, side rear setback of 30 feet. So there are two, there are existing stream buffers on the property, the rationale for the front setback reduction. They will be encroaching into the 75-foot impervious surface area setback, but they will be compensating that for, by buffer mitigation. So there's the two requested variances, two reduction of the impervious surface setback area, and then the reduce, reduction of the front setback from 35 feet to 10 feet. Staff is supportive of both of those.
Any questions from the council? See applicant here? Come on up.
The staff is recommending approval with those conditions. The front setback reduction, the impervious surface area setback reduction, we're conditioning that they provide buffer mitigation out of one-to-one ratio, and they'll be bound to the site plans submitted.
Thank you kindly, and thank you, Mr. Staub, Mayor Norton, and members of the council. I am Ladonna Lewis. I'm the owner of 1730 and 1740 Seneca Court and the land in between. I have owned these properties since, I believe, 2002 and 2003 respectively, and this has been a dream of mine to develop this land, improve the property values in the area, just in time for kids to go to college. So the builder I've selected is reputable in the area. We're building a beautiful custom home, and we just really look forward to adding to the, to the area and beauty of Smyrna.
Any questions of the council, Ms. Lewis? Thank you for being here. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone here who'd like to speak for or against this, if you'd like to come up and be sworn in by our city attorney, Scott Cochran, at this time. All right. Seeing nobody, this is in Mr. Gould's district. Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Lewis, thanks so much for your willingness to invest in the neighborhood. It's already a nice street, but I know, I'm sure what you'll do there will improve it even more. Beautiful couple pieces of property there, so thanks for making the effort to make this happen, take some effort and creativity to get there, and I'm sure a lot of hard work on your part, and then, of course, with Rusty's team also.
Yes. Couple years of planning.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm sure you'll be, I'm sure you'll be happy when it's done, so.
Yeah, and I'm committed to this. I've also invested in the surrounding homes, fixing them up. I really want to make an impact to the Cretewood Forest subdivision.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate, appreciate all that. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve item four, excuse me, 5C, 2020-84, as previously read.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Thank you. Next is item 5D, 2020-233, public hearing zoning request, Z20-006, rezoning from NS and RM10, conditional for the development of 10 single-family attached townhomes at a density of 9.3 units per acre, 1.08 acres, landlot 669, 3302 Atlanta Road Edgeline LLC. And this is the item that the applicant had requested to table. I'll turn it over to Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the, as just previously mentioned, at the request of the applicant, I move to table item 5D, 2020-233, as previously read.
Have a motion to table. Do I have a second? Mr. Lindley, second. All those in favor of tabling, please vote. Approved 7-0. Item six is commercial building permits. We have none. Item seven is formal business. 7A, 2020-301, approval of the mayor's appointment of Mr. Sean Tinnell to the Smyrna Tree Board. This is a four-year term that expires August 31st, 2024. I've known Sean a long time. He'll do great on that board. I'd like to have somebody make that motion for me, please. Okay. Motion made by Mr. Lindley. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Welsh. All those in favor, please vote. Approved 7-0. 7B, 2020-302, approval of the reappointment of Ward 1 resident Harrison Aiken to the Smyrna Tree Board. It's a four-year term that expires August 31st, 2024. And this is Mr. Glenn Pickens' appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve the reappointment of Harrison Aiken to the Smyrna Tree Board.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. Approved 7-0. Item 7C, 2020-317, approval of the reappointment of Ward 2 resident Ben Eggers to the Smyrna Tree Board. This is a four-year term that expires August 31st, 2024. Mr. Wagner.
I motion to approve item 7C as previously read.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Welsh. All those in favor, please vote. Approved 7-0. Thank you. Item 7D, 2020-303, approval of the reappointment of Ward 3 resident Robin Phillips to the Smyrna Tree Board, four-year term that expires 8/31/2024. Mr. Lindley.
Yes, this is a reappointment of Ms. Phillips. She served on the tree board for a number of years, so with that, motion to pass. This presented.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. Approved 7-0. Item 7E, 2020-304, approval of the reappointment of Ward 6 resident Gene Manke to the Smyrna Tree Board. This is a four-year term that expires August 31st, 2024. Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to reappoint Gene Manke to the Ward 6 position of the Tree Board. She does a great job and look forward to having her serving for four more years. With that, yeah.
You don't want to do anything else? We got a second by Ms. Wilkinson. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. And item 7F, 2020-305, approval of the appointment of Ward 7 resident Reverend Charles Maxwell Jr. to the Smyrna Tree Board, four-year term that expires August 31st, 2024. Mr. Wheaton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is not a reappointment, the first of the non-reappointments, but a new appointment for replacing a previous member who was happy to retire the position, but I know Reverend Maxwell will do a tremendous job in the role. He's very eager to do so, and so with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7F as read.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Wilkinson, second. All those in favor, please vote. Approved 7-0. Thank you. And the Tree Board did some great work last year, and I know, I'm very thankful for their service. Looking forward to what they'll bring for us coming up. Item 7G, Resolution 2020-08, approval of Resolution 2020-08 for the Trees Atlanta 1 Million Trees Project with a goal to participate in the overall preservation and planting of 1 million trees throughout metro Atlanta from February 2020 through February 2030, and to authorize the mayor to execute any and all related documents. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Smyrna has a strong partnership with the Smyrna Tree Board and Keep Smyrna Beautiful. The Smyrna Tree Board implemented the Trees Scarth Initiative in Smyrna last year and was instrumental in the revisions of the Smyrna Tree Ordinance. Keep Smyrna Beautiful has an Adopt a Tree initiative and gives out seedlings at Bring One for the Chipper. Both organizations work together each year on Arbor Day to educate and promote tree plantings. This resolution expresses its full support for the 1 Million Trees Initiative, and staff does recommend approval. Janet Lieberman, our Director for Environmental Services, is here in case anybody has additional questions.
Any comments, discussions, or questions for Janet? All right, I'm going to have Corky Welch handle this one. Mr. Welch. Have a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Gould, all those in favor, please vote. Approved 7-0. Thank you. Item H, 2020-298, approval to amend the fiscal year 2021 budget to include the revenue and anticipated expenses related to the CARES funding from Cobb County. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
The city council approved an intergovernmental agreement with Cobb County at the August 3rd, 2020 city council meeting. This agreement will allow for $2,968,559.10 to be received from the county for qualifying CARES expenses. The multi-year grant fund needs to be amended for the revenue and expenses related to this funding. Staff recommends approval of the amendment to the fiscal year 2021 budget to account for the CARES disbursements from Cobb County.
Thank you. I'm going to turn this over to our finance chair, Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7H to amend the budget.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Lindley, all those in favor, please vote. All those in favor, please vote. Approved 7-0. Thank you. Item I is 2020-313, approval of the second expenditure listing on the amendment to the fiscal year 21 budget for CARES Act funding for an amount not to exceed $310,980 for necessary expenditures incurred and/or planned due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
The CARES funding the city received from Cobb County agreement provides that the funds may only be used to cover those costs that are necessary expenditures incurred due to COVID-19, were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March 27th, 2020 for the city, were incurred during the period that begins on March 1st, 2020 and ends on December 30th, 2020. Any funds not used by December 30th will be returned to Cobb County. I requested that the staff put together a list of items that would meet the previously mentioned specifications. A team of staff members reviewed the request with me. This agenda item is for the second of several expenditures for an amount not to exceed $310,980 for necessary expenditures incurred or planned due to COVID-19 pandemic. This is for technology items, and specifically, I want to acknowledge that in this request is a proposal to the council that, as a result of the pandemic, students in the Smyrna area are required to do increasing amounts of work on computers, and many students do not have Wi-Fi access, which is necessary to successfully complete their work, and therefore, as a part of our public outreach and assistance initiative, the city would like to provide access for Smyrna residents, and that would be about 900 Wi-Fi hotspots for students in Smyrna.
As Ms. Sadler Jones said, we're trying to use some of that CARES money to help the community. This is just the first step in that, helping these students that are having to learn virtually have access to the internet that don't have it. And then we're talking about other ways in the future to help through business grants and other things, other ways to help the community with that money. So I appreciate Tim Gould and his chairmanship of the Education Committee and all the work they've done to put all this together, and with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it's a lot of creativity and hard work by staff and by Councilmember Louis Wheaton, Councilmember Susan Wilkinson, and their support of trying to use the CARES money in a way to successfully impact our families and students here in Smyrna. As my kids experienced today, remote learning started today. It's for their, for the school, and it's challenging, right? And we're fortunate that we have the technology at home, we have access to Wi-Fi, but I'm sure there's a great number of families here in Smyrna that don't have that same support structure. So the city will do what we can do with the CARES money and other resources to try to impact, to impact those families. So that, with that, Mr. Mayor, move to approve item 7I, 2020-313, as previously read.
Have a motion by Mr. Gould. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Wilkinson. All those in favor, please vote. Approved 7-0. Item J, 2020-297, approval to amend the budget and purchase a 2020 Alamo 6105-SE mower at a cost of $122,169 using the Alamo State Contract SWC number 99999-SPD-0000102. at a cost of $122,169 using the Alamo State Contract SWC number 99999-SPD-0000102. Flint Equipment Company located at 4500 Wendell Drive Southwest, Atlanta, Georgia 30336. This will be funded through the Fiscal Year 21 Vehicle Replacement Fund. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
The Public Works Street Division is requesting early replacement of an arm mower due to ongoing repair issues. The Budget Office has approved adjustments to the fiscal year 2021 vehicle replacement schedule and have requested that we prepare this agenda for tonight. The 2020 Alamo Arm Mower will be purchased from Flint Equipment in the amount of $122,169 using the state contract with Alamo Group. The equipment has already been competitively bid through the state of Georgia. It is the recommendation of the Public Works Director and the Purchasing Manager that we purchase this equipment from Flint Equipment using the state of Georgia contract.
This is another budget amendment. I'll turn it over to our Finance Chairman, Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to talk about this one just a little bit, because it's not every day that you get to buy a $122,000 lawnmower. And I want everybody to understand, because I really want them to understand, it's not just a lawnmower, this is a tractor with a swing arm that reaches out and mows everything on the side and adjustments, so don't get on to us too bad, because this is not a lawnmower. This is a heavy-duty piece of equipment that our Public Works Department needs to replace. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve item seven J, 2020-297 as previously read.
Have a motion to approve item J. Do I have a second? Councilmember Wheaton has a second. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item K, 2020-312, authorization to amend the budget for the use of emergency funds in the Vehicle Replacement Fund for an emergency repair of Smyrna Fire Department Truck One. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
The fiscal year 2021 budget included a line item in the Vehicle Replacement Fund for emergency repairs. The Fire Department would like to use a portion of this money in the amount of $30,965 for an emergency repair to truck number one. An amendment to the budget is needed to move these funds. The amendment would move the funds from the general line item for emergency repairs and into the Fire Department-specific project for vehicle replacement. Staff recommends approval of the amendment.
This is another amendment to the budget. Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be short on this one. I'd just like to make a motion to approve item seven K, the resolution to amend the budget to use for emergency funds in the vehicle replacement as previously, excuse me, as previously made read by Ms. Sadler Jones.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Chief Akry assures us that it wasn't any kind of error that we need to do a repair for. It was an internal thing. Item L, 2020-306, authorization to approve the installation of speed humps and associated striping between addresses 2729 and 2735, Spring Drive. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
Councilmember Glenn Pickens is requesting the installation of two new speed humps on Spring Drive. Spring Drive is in Ward One and Ward Two. The locations are, as mentioned, is between addresses 2729 and 2735. Data was collected in the summer of 2019. At the time, the traffic volumes averaged approximately 200 vehicles per day, and the AV5th percentile speed was approximately 30 miles per hour. Additional speed humps are not warranted based upon the City's current traffic calming policy, and therefore, staff does not recommend approval.
All right, this is in Mr. Glenn Pickens' ward. Turn it over to Mr. Pickens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to give a brief background on this. A year or two ago, the residents of Spring Drive approached the city with a petition to install speed tables to reduce the speed and improve safety on the streets. Two speed tables were installed, but this proposal is to amend original effort and fill in the gap between those existing speed humps and to hopefully slow the speed down and improve safety on the Spring Drive. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve 2020-306 to install two speed humps on Spring Drive.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. As was mentioned, this is also, this is a road that splits Ward One and Two. I have a few issues and concerns with this item on the agenda. One specific to this, and then a somewhat more general point about the policies that we have with traffic calming and how this went along with it. First is that I know, you know, this was initiated back before either of us were on the council, that there was a petition and there were speed humps installed. As of this time, I know there has been some conversation that this is what the neighborhood wants, but as the representative for Ward Two, I have not heard that from the community. I know that there are those that do, and I don't want to discount that, but at the same time, we know that these things impact the community as a whole and the neighborhood as a whole, and I think there needs to be more input from the neighborhood and time between this to get their input on what should happen as well. But on a larger point with the policy, as was mentioned by the City Administrator and in the documents around this, the city staff and the policies that the council has approved and put together don't support the installation of these speed humps. And I am definitely a policy person when it comes to these things. I think our job up here as city council members, our job is to be policymakers. I don't know if we should be putting a speed bump in here. It's not my expertise. The council hires people with the expertise to determine whether speed bumps should go there. We create the policies that determine whether speed bumps should go in certain neighborhoods. And given that it does not comply with a policy to put speed bumps here, I think we need to go through that process. As was mentioned, I think the study that was done for this before the two speed bumps were put in was done back in 2019. There has not even been time between, I think, the requests for these to further study what those speed bumps did, whether the new speeds and everything there would comply with the policy and justify speed bumps in here. That's not to say we shouldn't put speed bumps in places and that we shouldn't do that. I think we need to follow a consistent, simple process that we put together as a council. If the policy needs to change, we can change the policy, but if the proposals that are coming in and requested are coming in don't fit with the policy, I don't think it's our job as policymakers to go against the recommendations of the expert staff that we have hired to advise us on that. So I'll end my comments with that and open it up if anyone else has anything.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments?
I appreciate Councilman Wagner's comments. I just know in Ward Six, traffic calming and pedestrian safety is a significant concern for many residents and as it is, I'm sure, in other parts of the city. And I think that with the expertise we have on staff, there are different ways to interpret the data and to take into account the concerns of residents. And notwithstanding the specific example, but just more talking to the broader policy, that the concerns of residents really is an important factor, I think, in our decision-making process. So we do rely on the information from our staff, and their choices are driven by policy, of course, but then we, as council, have a different set of decision factors, which I think takes into account what we hear from our constituents. So that just puts another layer of decision-making process. So I see it just a little bit differently than Councilman Wagner expressed it.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, just real quick on that. I think it's important also when we're talking about the community involvement that our policy does contemplate that one of the factors that we're looking at is community involvement and neighborhood involvement, but also contemplates the fact that staff would go out, do a petition of the neighborhood, and discuss, and also like to see at least 60% of the neighborhoods, I think it's 60% of the homes impacted, to have express support for this. I haven't heard anything about that.
I'll speak as the former representative for Ward One. I do know that, and I see him in the audience, Stephen Jones, he and his family live right there. They have several houses right there on Spring and Spring, and he did go do that effort a few years ago, and it was overwhelmingly supportive. And, you know, in this instance, I don't know, but it could be that there just wasn't enough of them put in to slow down the traffic. I know that's certainly what you've seen, but, you know, as far as from a policy standpoint, it's hard to tell whether this was an error when it was done before, but I will tell you, there was some overwhelming participation of the impacted residents when that was done. Now, I can't speak to what's changed since then, but I know that you did an awful lot of work, Stephen, to get that to us over several months, so just wanted to put that out there. Any other discussion? Mr. Pickens.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve 2020-306 to install two speed humps on Spring Drive.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. Okay, all those opposed? All right, it's approved six one with Councilman Wagner in opposition. Item eight is the consent agenda. Ms. Sadler Jones, can you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Approval of, item A, pardon me, approval of the August 3rd, 2020 pre-council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the August 3rd, 2020 special called mayor and council meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the August 3rd, 2020 mayor and council meeting minutes. Item D, approval to purchase a 2021 Ford F-50, chassis with a 11-foot contractor bed at a cost of $62,388 funded in the fiscal year 2021 Vehicle Replacement Fund and to purchase through Wade Ford located at 3860 South Cobb Drive, Smyrna, Georgia 30080 using the Georgia State Contract 99999-01 SPD 0000155. And item E, approval to purchase a 2021 Kenworth T880 tandem axle dump truck at a cost of $151,587 funded in the fiscal year 2021 Vehicle Replacement Fund and purchased through MCH Kenworth Atlanta, 5860 Riverview Road, Mabelton, Georgia 30126 using the Georgia State Contract SPD 0000155-081716-KTC.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Have a motion by Mr. Lindley. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Thank you. Number nine is privileged licenses. We have none. Ten is show cause hearings. We have none. Eleven is ward or committee reports, and we'll start tonight with Mr. Glenn Pickens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report this evening, but I'd like to thank the council for speed humps on Spring Drive, so.
All right. Mr. Wagner.
The only thing I'd like to say is just to give a shout-out to the teachers of Cobb County today who had to deal with some stressful times. I know my two kids, we had some troubles getting onto the county system, but teachers were prepared and pivoted to their backup Zoom meetings, and with that, had a relatively stress-free day, so just want to give that shout-out to all those teachers that had to deal with some pretty unique circumstances, given schooling right now. That'll yield.
I'll add to that a shout-out to the parents who are also dealing with very interesting circumstances. Mr. Lindley.
Yes, sir, thank you. Just as referenced by my colleague, huge good luck to everybody, the kids and all the parents as they embark on a new school year in very interesting times, and want to say thanks to our city staff that always works hard. I know we get a lot of requests as members of the council and immediately pass that off to the staff over different areas, public works, engineering, police, fire, and usually within minutes, they address that issue and everything, as you heard, like with COVID and the response, a lot of innovative thinking, so they don't always get thanked, but just wanted to take a moment to note them. With that, I yield.
Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief, but I'm gonna kind of repeat what some other people have said and just give a lot of credit to our teachers out there today and parents as well, because this is something new, and it's quite honestly, my wife teaches, she teaches four and five-year-olds, and that sounds like it should be easy, but it's hard. And making this adjustment for as many students and as many teachers as we have in Cobb County is difficult, so just give them a little bit of patience and be with them. Austin didn't do it, his wife did it, so anyway. But give them a little bit of credit and be patient with them, that's all I care.
Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you. I would like to make this announcement for the library. Smyrna Library provides weekly virtual storytimes for toddlers and preschoolers. New programs post on the Smyrna Library Kids Facebook page every Wednesday and Thursday morning. The library also provides virtual programs and take-home crafts kits for older children and adults. To keep up to date on the library happenings, visit smyrnalibrary.com, then click on the library calendar. And with that, I yield. Thanks.
Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank the residents in Ward Six and in the surrounding area for reaching out to me this weekend, just to check in and ask questions about the proposed townhome development on Atlanta Road. There was some confusion about it, but really, it's so important for us all in the council to hear from our residents of asking questions and/or, you know, raising concerns or whatnot. That's how we understand what you all as citizens will expect from us. And then secondly, just to touch on what's been mentioned, you know, about the start of school, and really do appreciate the work staff's doing to be creative and how we can implement some solutions with the CARES money and have an impact on our students here in the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wheaton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to kind of echo what has been said before a little bit. You know, definitely want to thank my colleagues on the Education Committee, Tim Gould and Susan Wilkinson, for supporting, really doing something really cool for the residents here in Smyrna that really need Wi-Fi access. Also, shout-out to Smyrna Education Foundation in that as well. They were really great contact to help facilitate this, and there'll be some good roads ahead, I think, in working more with that foundation and also Cobb County Schools to do some really good things. Shout-out to the kids, to the parents, to the teachers. It was an interesting day. It wasn't perfect. I don't think it was supposed to be, but we're getting there and looking forward to a good school year for everyone.
Thank you. While we're recognizing those that have done good things for the schools, I forgot to mention in my mayoral report, a shout-out to Nancy over at Love Street for the food and supplies drive that she did, and to Penny on our staff for putting it together. I think we donated 98 backpacks to Campbell High School and Smyrna Elementary School, so that was a pretty awesome thing that they did, and thanks for all that donated food and supplies to that effort. Ms. Sadler Jones?
I just wanted to remind the public that on Monday, September the 7th, that's Labor Day, the city offices are closed. We will reopen on Tuesday, September the 8th, and because of the holiday, that is also the date for our September 1st meeting in September. And I too want to give a shout-out to the teachers. I repeated kindergarten starting today. My son is in kindergarten, and my husband, rather, is a Cobb County high school math teacher, so kudos to the teachers.
Mr. Cochran. Ms. Heather. No? All right, we have one person signed up for citizen input. If you didn't have a chance, you can still come up, but Stephen Jones, 2823, Spring Drive.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to thank you very much for approving the speed humps on Spring Drive. And the 31 homeowners in Ward One and Ward Two, thank you also. This has been a pretty long progress, almost three years would have been this October. And I especially want to thank Mayor Norton, who at that time, as he mentioned, was councilman, my councilman. He was very involved in our neighborhood and very concerned about our neighbors, about the children playing, and so he spent a lot of time, and we communicated back and forth. And probably in that time, Mayor, that you might have been in my neighborhood, you may have witnessed cars yourself. you may have witnessed cars yourself speeding up and down the street. I want to thank Glenn Pickens. Really appreciate his efforts and all he's done here at the beginning of his term and how he's been concerned, and because I live in Ward 1, I've been communicating with him. And also want to recognize Jack and Kay Bills. They are sitting back here. They have lived on Spring Drive for 43 years, and they live at a critical point in the neighborhood. They live at the top of the hill, so at the crest of the hill, there's a lot of times, there's a blind spot, and cars at a certain point can't see visibly over that hill, and their grandchildren play in that area. Sometimes, as they get older, you know, kids can ride bikes, or anybody's allowed to ride a bike down your neighborhood street. They're out there quite a bit, along with supervision, you know, just to be sure the speeding cars don't come and cause an accident. I've lived there 44 years now, and this has been a problem the whole time. I rode a bike when I was 10 years old on the same street, and we've never really been able to get anything done about it. And we've tried, other neighbors have tried in the past, it just hasn't happened. So, really grateful, really grateful for you proving this. I appreciate Councilman Gould's thoughts and comments. I think, you know, you can do speed studies. That's great. But when it comes down to it, the people that live there and the people that you want to serve, and as many have complained about it, that has a lot of impact, too. So, this street, and finally, I'll wrap it up here. The street's almost a mile long. It's basically a drag strip, not a drag strip, but you know what I mean. You can just, once you turn off Spring Road, you can go all the way down almost a mile. And people don't have an incentive to slow down, except for the two that Mayor Norton helped on speed humps that are there, but then there's so much space between them, they speed back up. But just my last comment, if you go down to Emory University, around that neighborhood, neighborhoods down there, the speed humps are everywhere, because they have problems of people cutting through and going to the university, and you're slowing down, you're slowing down going over there. They're just, they use them quite a bit. So, I just want to thank you again. This is a wonderful thing that has happened, safety issue, a simple couple of speed humps that will have a great effect on slowing these cars down. I do want to mention, our speeding has increased because we've got an Airbnb now on that street, so we have Uber and Lyft drivers coming in all during the day, you know, drop people off at that Airbnb and speed off and go. And this is on my end of the street where this is happening and not necessarily where the test sign was placed. That was done on the other end of the street. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. I remember when we first did that speed study, I can't remember if it was Carroll and or Spring, they're both a mile long. They clock people going almost 80 miles an hour on that road, extreme outliers, but I remember walking those neighborhoods with Laura and the kids, and I'm glad we're slowing everybody down. Is there anybody else who'd like to come up and speak for public input? All right, seeing none, this meeting, we'll call this meeting adjourned at 7:54. Thanks, everybody.